Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for April 22nd, 2021. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing in the Douglas Public Access channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:00. First item on the agenda, 7:00 PM, public hearing continued. Pine, Sand &amp; Stone Company, application for an earth removal special permit and a water resource protection overlay district special permit. I'm not going to read all the numbers. 62 Manchuck Street, possible vote. Okay, we received a letter asking that be put on the agenda, continued.
Is there anyone on the web? Because we can't see anyone that's attending the meeting.
Yeah, it isn't good.
No, no attendees. One participant, which is us.
Okay, alright. I can't see it from here.
Yeah, I can't either.
Alright.
They would like to request the continuation of the planning board public hearing for Pine, Earth Removal, St. Dennis Cemetery, scheduled for the next...
Thank you.
May 20th.
For the second meeting in May.
What's the date on that one?
Uh, 27th.
Do we have anything else?
Nope.
Five, there's a...
A million...
That would be May 13th.
Uh, 27th they're asking for.
The second one, May 27th. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Pine, Sand &amp; Stone Company to May 27th, 2021, at 7:00 PM.
Second. Motion made by Trace, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and it continued.
We've got Jude online and another person, George. For other items that are on the agenda.
Alright.
Cool.
We'll go on to additional business.
Yep.
Request for board approval on sale of project assets BWC White and Reservoir LLC, Blue Wave Solar, 45 Oak Street, possible vote.
Mr. Chair, recused himself on this one.
Alright, let the record show that Mike Z has recused himself.
So...
Alright, is there anybody from BWC on?
Nobody from BWC. People are joining, looks like they're coming in late. Ernie, the only thing I know about this was Maria mentioned that she was waiting for Jay Tallaman to sign off on his review of the purchaser.
Yep, she'd mentioned that to me.
And...
She hasn't received anything yet.
Yeah, I think that's... So I said that the BWC should be talking to Tallaman, and as a result of that conversation, should send us a letter.
Is there anyone from BWC on the air?
There was somebody over there, and he just took off.
No, that's my...
I'm gonna just pass over this.
What does that even mean, request?
Pass over it to keep it on discussion, till we receive some sort of...
Not Jackie, BWC?
Yeah, I think she might be.
Hmm, no. Is she? Oh, yeah, she is.
Yeah, hey. What is the meaning of...
Yeah.
Alright.
Do you want to ask?
Do you want to give us an update?
Yep, do you want to give us an update? And just give your name and address, so we know who you are and it's on the record.
Hi, this is Jackie Bursey, applicant, BWC White and Reservoir LLC. Just wanted to ask for some clarity. We did have an email chain going with town council, and he had requested some documents to be executed before receiving an approval of the applicant, but I just wanted to clarify that some of the documents that have been requested, which has been de-commissioned on, being executed, would be something that the applicant themselves, or sorry, the long-term project owner would be responsible for, so there's a bit of a, I guess chicken and egg scenario is the wrong way to say that, but without an approval of that long-term owner, we wouldn't be able to execute those documents. So I just kind of wanted to run that by the planning board and engage their thoughts, and I'm not sure if town council is here.
No, Jay's not online, but I think what Jay probably was referring to is that because the bond that's posted is through you guys, not the purchaser, so you guys would get the bond back, and he would want the other bond in place.
We need assurance of that.
Ensure, do you understand? It's a timing situation.
We can't release a bond without guarantee of a new bond, I suppose.
Yeah, I think that's what Jay's looking for.
Or...
Sorry, could you clarify some...
Sorry.
Should we let Jay handle this? I mean, we're not...
No, 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 no.
I'm not really sure what's going on here, but let Jay and them handle it out, or have direct contact.
Yeah, yeah, they're talking to them. You're still talking to Jay, correct?
Yeah, I can follow up on that email chain, but I just wanted to kind of discuss the planning board, their thoughts. We can work on it offline if that's...
Yeah, I would think that Jay would just want to make sure that the... that there's a bond in place for the solar farm when it gets discontinued. So that's might be what he's referring to, but I'm not, none of us are involved in that conversation.
Did we receive anything from Jay?
No, not yet.
We haven't yet.
So, okay, so yeah, no. The board needs to be... So Ian, if you could request the correspondence that she's talking about, so that we can see what she's talking about.
Should we update it?
Yep.
They need to engage on this and get some...
Cool.
Common ground, whatever.
But you keep talking. You want the email.
Continue the...
Yeah.
I don't really continue either.
Yeah, so we're just gonna table this.
I was kind of talking at the same time, this whole part over.
That's why we're here.
We need to get the information from town council on what's been said, and if you can request from him if you would like what he needs, in order, if it's a bond, if it's for decommissioning, whatever it is, and then provide that to him, so that we can make a decision on the next meeting. We'll just keep it on as additional business until it gets resolved.
Okay, yeah, and I think, I think Tracey, you were commenting on the email chain, but I will shift that forward to...
Chair?
Ian is our contact.
Yes, so if you want to forward it to me, do you want my email?
Yes, me, that's great.
Okay, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so it's gonna be I M C E L W E E at C M R P C dot org, and I will forward, and I will make sure that the board gets all the information.
Okay, great. You said I am the only...
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Yeah, great, okay, we can definitely follow up with town council, I'll find out about that, but I just wanted to kind of provide the context that the actual, we could come to, you know, a decommissioning bond form, but the actual issuance of that decommissioning bond generally is done by the long-term owner of the project, yes, obviously, it's the same project company, but to understand the kind of timing and strength for us is that we need to know that the long-term owner would be acceptable before we could issue that payment, if that makes sense.
So, did you receive anything after March 18th from Jay?
Not yet, no.
Okay. So he says, "I'm not in possession of the facts underlying the request and sale, but generally, the town would be looking for the ability to assess the level of experience of the new owner, so as to ensure comfort level that the applicant will comply with all the requirements. Additionally, the board would want to ensure that all pertinent agreements for decommissioning, et cetera, have been executed. This is substantially similar to the assurances that we would seek for any other project." So that's the last email I have, so did you provide anyone with the information? Any information?
Because I didn't know exactly what information he was looking for, or what fact he meant specifically, so it was just a little bit unclear as to what...
Yeah.
What it was, the condition, which I think we already had the condition, but yeah, we are happy to provide more information, just trying to figure out what exactly...
But not to us, to be clear, it needs to be, we all go, it needs to be between our attorney, you know, town attorney and this.
Well, Jay's saying the board. Jay's saying the board.
Yeah, but we're gonna look for his assurance.
I mean, it's...
What we need is recommendation.
Correct, yeah.
We need, we need the legal issues solved for us before it comes back to...
So the agreements for decommissioning, did you have the new owner sign anything saying that they would be taking over those agreements in your place?
Including the bond.
So it would...
Assumable.
Still with the project company, so it wouldn't necessarily be in our place, but just from like the mechanism of how it would work, because we wouldn't be able to issue that bond without the long-term owner knowing that they actually have, can have ownership of the project, which obviously we would need board consent for, before we would look to transfer or sell the project, and so it's just kind of a timing question, I mean, for all of our other solar projects that have been bonded and executed once we've already transferred ownership of the project to the long-term owner, so that's just, that's just one specific example that Jay mentioned, and so we're happy to touch base on this offline and kind of get more clarity from him, but I just wanted to take that...
It's gonna be offline.
Yeah, let's get back with Jay, and hopefully that you can get it resolved before the next meeting.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
You want us to keep you on the agenda for the next meeting?
I didn't recall.
So what is the next meeting?
When is our next meeting?
May 13th?
May 27th.
No, 13th.
13th.
May 13th is the next one, yeah.
May 13th, I'm saying, and then one following that is 27th.
Yeah.
27th?
We could probably continue to the 27th, and just coordinate with Jay, and then I can maybe send back and forth.
Okay, so we'll just table this, until then.
27th of May?
Yep.
Who wants to take care of the book and their scheduling?
I can do it.
Okay.
Well, we're just gonna keep it on a discussion, right?
Yeah.
Additional business.
On the project, so, cool.
Alright, anything further, Jeff?
That's all for now, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, we'll look forward to listening to you again.
Yep.
Okay, let the record show that Mike Z is back. Alright, number two, White and Reservoir Estates, status, possible votes.
They're online.
Alright.
Hi, Jude here for Representative Whitten Heights, Office of Manager's Engineering. Has any of the boards since the last meeting been able to get out there and look at the site?
The building inspector? Yes. Yes, I have, and I have spoken with the building inspector, who's also been out there twice, and he seems very pleased with the progress you're making.
Perfect, I was out there with him yesterday, and we discussed a few items that he asked to have addressed. There was a couple of hay bale or wattle breaches that we had fixed, there's a few things that had to be addressed, but for the most part, what I noticed yesterday was, the road's clean, the catch basins are cleaned out, and they sprayed the rocks in the fore bay today to get all the silt off of the sides, it's now on the bottom, which they're planning on knocking out into detention basin. There's a pile of rock on lot one, as you come in on the left-hand side, that's proposed to be used because we have to bring the foundations up, we have to fill site on lots that we're asking to be released, which is lots four, six, and seven. So once we get the release on those, the plan is to put, take that riprap and install it on those lots and bring them up to pad grade and install the foundations. And the plan is for those three lots is to get septic systems in and get everything graded out even before we start to frame the actual structure. We want to get the foundation in, and we want to get the site stabilized, so what that'll do is that'll complete that whole left side of the road, minus lot one. So from two to lot seven will all be complete, and we can dress that whole side up, we'll start installing the sidewalk and all the things that we have to on that side. There's a pile of loom on lot 10, on the right-hand side, it's been sitting for a while, me and the building inspector discussed and told the applicant that, you know, if, per the stormwater pollution plan, if that pile's gonna be remained untouched, he needs to spray some kind of a temporary seed mix on it, so it doesn't get windblown erosion, or start to erode from the pile itself. I do know that they installed septic systems on eight, lot eight and lot nine, and they're going to start using that loom pile to start covering those up, we gave them the okay to backfill today, the septic systems were installed appropriately, so now they're gonna start to cover those. So they are gonna start tuning into that loom pile on lot 10 to start grading out some of the backs of the houses, specifically lots eight and nine, and whatever is left in that pile will be stabilized at that point. But from what I saw, compared to what we talked about last time, and not having seen it, I went out there yesterday, and I think that most everything, if not everything, has been addressed, and it looks pretty decent on that.
Thanks, Scott. Alright, this is from Ken. He's attached photos also, and it's a checklist of the work that they've done. There's only one copy of it, so if you want to pass it around and you can...
Is there a map, so that I can refresh my mind on the locations? What lots have been built on?
Lots two and three have been built on and sold, lot eight, nine, and 12 have foundations on them and are in mid-construction, and lot, I believe, lot five also.
And when we did the, we took back the releases of every other one, right?
One, four, six, seven, and 10, I think it was.
We did. And they're asking for three more releases tonight for foundations and septic systems. Is that correct, three more tonight you're asking for?
Yes.
It just cleaned up a lot, maybe the foundations are appropriate just for now, and it's stabilized the whole property.
It's the people that are living there already.
Yeah, that's the only thing I'm concerned about.
I understand what they're looking for, the lots still don't have any ads, nothing like that, and we were playing babysitter, so we released all the lots, because they're gonna go right back to where it was, these three lots. I don't agree on releasing three personally, maybe one or two, or not.
Come on, I think they want to do all three at the same time, don't get them stabilized.
It don't matter, it's, I mean, we've been told, we've been told a lot of stories about this place since day one, and every time it happens, it's just a story.
Yeah, but it's a different contractor and developer now.
He said he had this stuck last fall, and he left us all go, the way he did till we went up and looked at it, so that means that we've been having to babysit, and I don't like the promotion enough to...
Well, at some point, from a developer's standpoint, it's a matter of solvency too, you know, trying to release certain lots and start to try to take in some funds and keep working.
So we released two lots.
Well, that's fine.
And then, one is also received a building permit?
No, one's got rocks on it.
So what is one White and Heights, then?
So there's six left for it to be released, lot one, lot four, lot six, seven, 10 and 11.
Oh, 11.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's five.
No, there's five to be released.
Correct.
There's one, six, seven, 11, and four, four.
So one...
One, four, six, seven.
Five. Ten.
Ten.
Ten, ten, 10 or 11?
No, 11.
11?
Yes.
So 10's got the loom pile on it, that one's been released.
No, that's 11.
That's 11?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So this building permit for one White and Heights is which lot number?
12.
Yeah, that was already issued.
Okay. But it's number one.
I have no problem with two.
Give them a choice of two that's best for them for stability, stabilizing.
The board wants to decide, I'm just relaying what the...
Right, and then in a couple of weeks, you know, let's see what goes, and, you know...
Well, I'll take one in a couple of weeks, but...
Or a month, or whatever.
Let's go on baby steps, yeah, at least I'd say go with two.
Well, let's give them something tonight, you know?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
May I add something?
Yep.
May I add something?
Go ahead.
Okay, this is lot base, we're not asking for building permits, we're asking for foundation permits, okay? We don't even want to go vertical, okay? We want to be able to put three foundations in, I'm sorry, foundations in, and stabilize them, okay? Wait a minute. These will fill lots, it gets rid of all of, not all of the material, but most of the material that's on site, okay? We get to use all of the lull, not all of it, but of course, most of it, okay? And we get to complete the left side of the project, all the back ads will be completely done before we're even asking for a building permit. But, okay, it's a responsible way to do this, I've been out there with Ken yesterday, he seemed to be on board, but I know that he's not planning for it, but, you know, that's the thought process behind, is not to get other buildings up, it's to get this site stabilized, okay? I didn't ask for lot number one, lot number nine, because we want to be using the material from those lots.
One and 11.
Hopefully, you see the wisdom in getting all of the, all of the site stabilized, at least on the left-hand side. When you go to the right side, the bottom two lots, okay, lot eight, nine, okay, are already released, again, those are gonna be stabilized as well, because the septic systems are all ready.
We don't do foundation-only permits.
Lot four, okay, is very important, because then we can work out to lot five and not create, okay, a leak there, because the septic system on lot five is higher than lot four. If we go to lot six, okay, it's the same thing. If we do lot seven, then we're filling the whole front there, using a lot of materials.
What three is...
What three?
You know, we're not asking to go vertical.
Four, six, seven.
Just put foundations.
I mean, I'm still gonna say two, if that's still your thought factor, then you should have thought of that in the beginning, instead of your lot starting in those areas first. So, like I said, I'm still gonna say two.
Yeah. I think the problem was created when you check a board a little bit, you built over here and built over there, and you kind of check a board back and forth.
I like the idea of completing one side of the project and everything stabilized, and the foundations in and everything done on that side, that's my way of looking at it.
But the way I'm looking at it is, that's the thought factor, why wasn't it thought up in the beginning? You should have done it in the beginning, instead of creating this fiasco.
Because we had a different builder we were dealing with then.
Yeah.
And I think these guys have done a much better job, and they've done a lot more work to get the project done than the other developer did. I have no problem with three lots, that's my state, that's my take.
And Bob, you do know...
It's just foundations and septic systems, it's not houses yet, and it stabilizes that whole side of the road.
Bob, are you sure that the building inspector is going to issue a foundation-only permit?
Yeah.
Because I don't believe that's available for Douglas.
It's a building permit, once you start a foundation, it's a building permit.
Yeah, they're going lot...
I can't hear you.
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
That's what I'm requesting, okay? I'm not trying to get one over on you, I'm telling you that I won't go...
I don't believe it's a possibility, we don't issue foundation-only permits in Douglas.
Okay, I...
So did the building inspector say that he was going to issue a foundation-only permit?
That's what he told me.
Correct.
He was okay with, he was okay with the foundations only.
Even in his note here, he doesn't say otherwise, he says, "The contract is looking to get a foundation-only permit."
Yeah.
But I've never heard of a foundation-only permit in town of Douglas.
Yeah, I don't know.
Unless it's a business of a permit, it don't exist.
Yeah, but why, so apparently, the building inspector doesn't know that he can't do.
Well, I'm just saying, I've never seen it.
Me either. I've asked for it before, I know, I experienced it.
It's a nonexistent thing that is being spoken about.
But I do see what Bob's trying to do here, and I know Jude's been out there, and we're gonna kind of hold Jude's feet to the fire as we go forward, and I mean, making sure that the site continues along in the right process and the right, you know, practices are done, so I'm okay with...
From inspection that you two guys did when you took, and the results that we've gotten from the developer, at this point, I'm very satisfied that he immediately started on the problem.
Correct.
I've been up there three times, it's looked real good.
I respect that, but the problem is, nothing would have happened if we didn't go out there.
Yeah.
Period. They let it just go, because nobody was doing anything. The only reason anything got done there is because we went out there, we raised the concern about it.
Right.
Right?
Otherwise, we had nobody else to go, so we have to go.
But the idea is, if they are responsible enough outfit, it shouldn't have had to happen that way, it should have been completed the whole time, period.
Yeah.
That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, I totally understand what you're saying, but it should not have happened that way.
Alright, so Bob, to the chair, Bob and Jude, can we get a schedule, a rough schedule of timeline and events, when you guys do plan on doing the sidewalks and some other work out there, so we get an idea of some progression?
They can come back, we can allow one foundation-only permit, and then come back to the next meeting, ask for another one, we can see what the progress has been, but it's not like...
It's two weeks between our meetings.
The activity as far as stabilizing doesn't, I don't believe, requires a permit, where you're talking about grading on the other lots to put one foundation in.
He's trying to put three foundations in.
Yeah.
Trying to put three in and stabilize all three with septic systems and all that at the same time, and complete one side of the project.
Clean it up a lot better.
But it's not the same as a foundation permit.
But there's...
It's a building permit.
There's a lot in between four and six, right?
That's the stockpile that they want to eliminate by doing the next three lots that they're asking for right now.
But this also, the building card has excavation, foundation permit, frame, so obviously, they're not gonna sign off on anything. If we're suggesting that the foundation permit is what we are collectively agreeing could help them stabilize, they're not gonna get through to frame, they're not gonna go vertical, they're not gonna have a card.
We still have two lots, we still have two lots for holding back.
Yeah, but no, but that, no, you don't, you have the permit, but if the building inspector says, the building inspector's the boss out there.
He can go to Boston.
He could, he could stop, he's not gonna sign anything off. If he doesn't sign off on the foundation permit, he can't go to the frame.
Yes, he can.
He can't.
He can go to Boston.
He cannot do that.
Yes, he can.
If the, if he's...
Yes, you can.
You're telling me.
He can go around the building inspector and go to Boston.
You can do that, you can go to Boston, you go to the state, you think he's gonna do that?
We still got, at the end of the day, we still have two lots, and if we release three lots tonight, we still have two that are held back to ensure that the job continues at the right progress, and that, you know, at the end of the day, with what the road is.
I, I...
I'm okay with Ernie's thought.
The only thing they do is take a vote now, now, if anybody else has anything else to say.
Ken, somebody show me a map of where these lots are.
Ah, I got it in my car.
Because I'm looking at, Jude, can you share your screen and show me where the existing house is?
I come in at home, I don't have, it would take me...
No, I have it right here. Okay, so do you know what the parcel, if you look on the assessor's map, which parcels? I see the one that's already built on, that's number 11, if you're looking at the...
Maybe I can help you.
Okay.
Okay. The first one on the left is not built on.
Nine.
Second, third are built on.
Those two, built.
The fourth is not built on.
That one's not built on.
The fifth is built on.
And then they built on this one here.
The sixth is not built on, the seventh is not built on.
It's not built, he's trying to get the cul-de-sac done.
Okay.
Alright, so that's...
And you go to the 11 lot, which is up on the other side.
Right, yeah.
You don't want that.
You don't want that.
It's the affordable unit.
And what we're looking to do is, two lot four, so that we can build both septic systems on lot four and five, not create a pond, and then that one's, like, essential.
So, let's do four.
Lot, lot six, which is the-
Yeah.
Okay.
He's trying to get the-
Okay, to get rid of some of the-
Yeah.
Number seven, okay, is right next door to six, and you can see how close these houses are together, they almost have to go in together.
Yeah. So, six and seven are in that cul-de-sac down in the, down in the hole. So, you gotta do those two together, at the end of the day. You're trying to, you're trying, you're trying to put the one, number four, you're trying to work on four, because it's in between two houses.
Right.
That one that's already sold and up and running, and then the other one's being constructed and almost finalized.
Right.
So, you're trying to settle that life there, to make that person's life easier.
Yep.
You know what I mean, to get the lawn in, so now, both people on the both sides are okay.
Right.
And you're trying to put the other material in, in the cul-de-sac hole, to bring that up to grade, to make all that work there. That's-
I would do four, and then come back in two weeks for the other two, for six and seven. What would be the disadvantage? I mean, two weeks, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get a permit tomorrow, right?
Right, I mean, it takes me a couple of weeks to do it anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, but I, but okay, but I don't want to keep coming back just to ask for a foundation permit, because it's, it, it, you know, I'm not an engineer, okay? And I am asking for something on the board, okay? But it is good, um, engineering practices, you're working your way out, okay? In, okay, in this case, you're working your way in. Or, you know, okay, number four is, you know, really needs to get done.
Yeah.
Number six is next to lot five, number seven, and then there's the pond.
Yeah.
Okay, so all that gets stabilized, okay, at the same time.
Right, but our leverage is, you know, the incentive for you to continue is the only thing we have, is if we withhold.
Two lots though, too. Okay, so, you know, I mean, I, you know, you have got a cash bond, we're not going anywhere. Okay, we're, we're, okay, we're there for the duration.
Yeah.
You're asking me when I want to get, okay, the road down on the sidewalk, I want the entire road complete, you know, total. Sidewalks, uh, uh, curbing, everything. Okay, in order to do that, I get foundations in.
Yeah, I almost think it's a nice check-in though, like you're saying, you don't want to come back to the board, but it is nice because of the track record from before, so it is kind of nice to touch base, anyway.
Okay, well, I'll come back in a month and say hi, okay? But, but I, I, you know, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm not being smart with you, I'm just, I'm trying to-
Yeah.
Alright, let's move forward.
Yeah, we're trying to help you also, and help the people that live there, that went through all the dirt and the-
You didn't help yourself by the situation created earlier.
Okay, I, I, listen, we can't go backwards.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's go forward.
Okay, I don't know how else to say that.
Okay.
Ken corrected going forward.
We'll go forward, we'll go forward.
We're just going forward. Uh, my, my position is two lots.
Right, they're asking for three.
Yeah.
Well, the other lot, that doesn't make sense.
Four, four.
It's either the two lots, six and seven, or the one lot of four, and then come back in May 13th.
Six and seven, the two side by side.
Four is a-
I don't want six and six.
You know it's six.
But the, but the middle, that, that lot, the four is in the middle.
Let's ask Bob a question, Bob, if we were gonna do two lots right now, which ones did you want?
Four and six.
Alright.
Which ones?
Four and six. Right down the hill.
Four and six.
And then, and then as soon as you get that, and, and things continue in a positive way, we're all in.
Yeah.
You know, so, so let's keep moving.
It's not like you don't, you're barred from applying, so all the information could be there.
I understand, but even in the back, okay, of lot seven, where it ties in.
Yeah.
Okay, what I'm trying to do is get that to have grass on it as well, okay? So, I gotta put the septic system in. Can I put the septic system in, because I don't have the, the, I don't have the building permit.
Yeah.
I have no problem, I have no problem asking four and six.
Okay.
If we wait-
Is that a motion?
If we wait until July to get a building permit, you're never gonna grow grass there.
I agree.
So, so Bob, I mean, if the board's ready to do the two, would you take the, the four and six, and then come back, and, you know, as soon as you get something?
Well, well, of course I'd take that, I mean-
Yeah, but that's-
I mean, I, I'm, I'm just trying to appeal to you to say-
We understand.
Okay, and you have my commitment, okay, but I won't go vertical on it. Okay, which, which you're not even asking me to, to, uh-
No, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do that, cause if you sell it-
I will come back, okay, to say we're ready to go vertical.
I'm okay with-
That's a building permit situation, about that. We have no control over that.
Okay, okay.
I'm okay with the three.
So, four and six.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm okay with the three.
I'm okay with three.
Because it just cleans it up.
And, and, what's it called, when you sort of respect the other people, I mean?
I know, we're-
When you, when you, indifference to my classmates.
Were they all released at one point?
Yes, and we pulled, and we pulled five back.
So, we, we already released a ton, we pulled them, or, we pulled them back.
Rescinded, yeah.
Yep.
You know, I, I, I'm fine with three, just we-
They had five originally, we're giving them three.
Yeah, we still hold two and stuff like that, Bob's, you know, gonna, again, I think it's about stabilizing and getting the people's lives back there, and getting it done, so.
If we give them the three, they get one side stabilized, and-
I'll make the motion if it is-
Wait, 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 wait.
Which side gets done?
So, the three that they're asking for.
Four, six, seven.
Four, six, and seven.
So, will we get a, will we get an update for our next meeting?
Yeah, should. Can you do that, Bob, can you give us an update at our meetings as you, as we go along?
So, if we release the three tonight, if we release the three now, would you give us an update at the next?
May, May 13th, at our next meeting, just give us an update.
I, I, I'm not in a trouble to have a permit by then.
I understand, I understand, just, just a status report.
Just keep us updated, if you can come, if you can attend to meetings like you do now, let us know what's going on, how the three lots that we released are going.
That's it.
Him or Jude or someone.
Yeah.
Okay, can I, at least I'll be, then I'll come back on the 27th, whatever it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm still gonna say, I'm-
I got you.
Alright, make, make a motion somewhere.
I'll make a motion to, uh, release lots four, six, and seven, uh, for Whitemanville, Heights, uh, that's a Whitemanville Reservoir Estates.
And, and make it known that whether or not we can control anything about foundation vertical, whatever, say that we are saying foundation, that's what we're-
Can't, we can't have that.
No, you could say it, it doesn't mean that-
Say it, you can say it.
Say it, add it in there, it's our spirit of this board, if we're right or wrong.
Yeah, for the purpose of the building inspector to release, uh, foundation-only permits.
By foundation and septic.
Yeah.
Alright, motion made by Les.
Oh, second Les.
You can make a note that, that, okay, the applicant agrees to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Alright, motion made by Les, seconded by Jake.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Call is in favor?
No, Tracy, no.
So, let's roll call.
Tracy.
She said no.
Okay, Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Raco, aye.
Aaron Silk, red, aye.
Mike Switney, no.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Ernie Mock's aye, okay, the motion passes.
Okay.
Alright, you got your three lots?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, check in with us, keep us appraised of what's going on, please.
You know what?
Thank you.
Hey, we're not always gonna agree 100% of the time, and it's good to have these votes.
Look at the last meeting, we were split.
Alright.
Different people, different thing.
Item three.
Yep.
ASD Wollam Mass Solar decommissioning agreement, possible vote. Do we have anybody here from Wollam Lake?
I don't see anybody.
I'll recuse myself if anybody says anything.
Okay, let the record show that Tracy's recused herself.
But I think, don't think anybody's-
I don't think they're online, yeah.
There's nothing submitted to us.
Oh.
This is George Faye, will you, uh, talk about the solar farm?
No.
My thing coming up now, or am I?
Will be.
Two more.
Few minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Wrong one.
Nope. Okay, moving on.
Yep, next one.
This is confusing.
Nobody's on there from Wollam Lake?
Williams?
This is confusing me.
Alright, number four, stone slope stabilization, Armstrong Building and Development, William Estates, lots three, R, and four, duplexes, possible votes.
Uh, where's Eric? He was supposed to submit to us a plan, right?
I'm sorry, Tracy.
Eric, was that? He was supposed to submit a plan?
Yeah, and I think there's only one copy, so.
Okay.
We got one plan.
We didn't get it electronically?
I, I don't know if you did or not, Maria said, she had one copy, and then she gave me.
So, for the record, we need to get all application materials electronically filed with the board, one electronic copy, emailed to Maria, or whomever the contact is.
Yep, I agree.
This is, this has been going on for over a year.
Yeah.
And every, every single town requires you to have an electronic copy. I don't know why we're not requiring it.
I don't know either, but we didn't get-
And Eric's not here?
No.
To explain this to us?
He's not on, or he's not?
And they've got a, no, doesn't look like he's on. They also have a, uh, foundation in the back, I drove by the, the site this week, um, they got a foundation in the back, uh, left corner, put in, um, the driveway slopes are-
It's a letter they're explaining what he wants to do.
Yeah.
Like I said, he, he didn't get electronically, so I got one copy, and that's all I have.
And I thought I wanted to see the proposed, approved versus what it looks like now, cause we really need to protect this person, that's the abutter, on that side. That's really my only concern with the changing.
Yeah.
So.
We want a whole lot for this?
Yeah, yeah, we need it.
He's not here to present.
Yeah.
If nobody's here to present, then we need to make it known to him, they need to be able to be present to present, and that way, then it'll get electronically maybe submitted.
Yeah.
So, it can all be reviewed before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to review it before the time of-
There's a letter, he submitted a letter with it.
Yeah, we got a copy of that in our folder, in our packet, yeah.
April 12th, right?
Yes.
Yeah. You do have a copy of that, okay.
And he has to make his case on how this won't negatively affect the neighbor, more so than it already was.
It's a well-built, stabilized slot, it's not going-
The approved plan versus the proposed change.
The deltas. Yeah, and he was, and he was told that last meeting.
Yes. Is that?
Yeah, that's number four.
Is that yours?
That's just additional business, so.
Thank you. Alright, we'll put that on for next agenda, and hopefully it'll show up.
Hey, George.
Waiting on, that's number four, or number three? Can't tell you how much I missed, Bill.
Five.
We're on five.
Five, rolling along.
Alright, I wanted to just set this one, okay?
Yep.
Alright, number five.
George is online.
Received a letter from George back at 11 Cedar Street, Solar Farm Commercial Vehicles using Cedar Street, possible vote, and there's no vote on this, but-
Discussion.
Anybody have a copy of that letter?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's in our packets.
Okay, we'll submit that to the file.
So, Ian, were you able to review the decision that we had? So, about, um, noise, traffic, dust, things like that, as far as the special permit that we issued for this, uh, solar farm? I think that, that may have something in there that would, uh, allow us to contact the applicant to see if there's anything they can do about the issues, the traffic issues, the negative, like, it's not supposed to be, you know, the street is getting damaged from the construction vehicles.
And this is the Wollam Lake one?
It's not, the infrastructure is not built for that kind of traffic, and there is an alternative way with better roads to, to travel to the site.
I'll take a look at that decision.
Yeah, so they're coming from Wollam Lake, Solar Farm, George pretty fast.
Speeding issue, have the police been contacted?
Oh, no, George is on.
George is online.
See what he's saying.
And also maybe send for this to the applicant, if Maria didn't already.
Yeah, copy of that.
That's what my, that's what my feeling is.
Can we ask the applicant some questions?
Well, it's applicant, uh-
George?
George? I'm here.
Um, the question came up, have you addressed, I mean, there's two things, damage to the road and such like that, but also the speed?
He's not the applicant.
No, he's just a complaint.
And the fuel, fuel constantly, I have horses here, and there are people that go on trail rides.
Yep.
And having those trucks coming by, six feet into the morning, all through the day, tractor trailers and the dump trucks, it's, uh, scary, there's horses around here, people that go out on the road.
The Wollam, fuck, Solar Farm, they're going through.
I understand, the cutting truck. It's just a, it's a nuisance, the sound, the speeding, the trash that's, uh, being thrown on Cedar Street here.
Is it a traffic issue?
It's, it's just nonstop, I mean, it's, I swear, there's 40 to 50 trucks go by all day long.
Yeah.
Back and forth, back and forth.
I know where he is, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so it's gonna be part of the construction process.
Correct. Speed, the speed is an-
Speed has to be addressed by the police.
We can contact the developer and let them know.
I feel it's paid.
There's no speed limit, there's no speeding limit.
We can get something posted.
There's nothing posted there in general.
Thirty?
Yeah.
They're not legally speeding then.
Yeah, I would, you know, I guess we do get the developers' contact information. Maybe have Ian send an email and a copy of this letter to them.
Right, right.
And asking them to.
See what the decision says with any kind of.
Yeah, ask them to review their.
Detrimental, yeah. It's detrimental for the neighborhood is pretty much what's happening.
And I'd have them come to the May 13th meeting.
Do we have a traffic committee or something?
We have.
Yeah.
That's all.
Safety committee.
Safety committee.
For signs.
They determine.
Can they post?
Speed limits postings and stuff.
Right.
By the time it gets posted though, the construction probably will be over.
It's not posted, it's a third.
Right, I understand, but I mean, we have 25 and people do 40, 45 on our streets, you know, over at the farm, so.
All right, so I think that's what we can do is.
And we'll just let George know what the response is.
Forward the letter to the developer and then.
They copied the police department, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
I asked posting to the police department, they say that there is no posted speeds, but there is a minimum, I mean, there is a speed limit if there isn't one, but we asked that they staked it out, but they haven't.
Yep, okay, all right.
You're doing the right thing, George, I know, this is tough.
We'll ask for the applicant to be here for the next meeting.
That'd be good.
Yep.
Yeah, that's responsive.
Yeah.
Physically or?
Physically.
Or.
Or on Zoom.
On Zoom.
Online.
Or live.
Okay.
So you can respond to your letter and, you know, if they gotta review their traffic flow, then they can.
Not with their drivers, that's all.
Yep, fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. You sure?
Alright, so I'll come back to the next.
Yeah, next meeting's on the 13th.
13, okay.
Is it two weeks, is it two weeks or three weeks?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's in three weeks. Three weeks, George, three weeks, 13.
Okay.
Yep, okay. All right, cool.
All right, we received an email from Norman Simmons Gilboa.
Yeah.
To vote.
Which one's Gilboa?
Um, Norman Simmons, so first, has Norman seen the traffic study?
Yeah.
As well as the peer review and the revised traffic study?
That project is in a public hearing.
In itself, he's referring to the tri-town, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so I would think that he would have to join the three-town.
Correct.
No, you can just see the documents, we just don't have them on our website. But Sutton has them and I think Oxbridge has the folder.
If he wants to.
We should really be adding on the.
If he wants to comment on, he should comment in the public hearing.
That's what my, yeah, that's what my response to this would be.
Yeah.
So Norman, you'll have to locate the published documents for the traffic studies and they'll give you the methodology behind that, behind the actual report.
Is this relevant to just the project on the north side of 146 that you're referring to?
No, it'd be the east side, yeah.
Yes, but it does, it's inclusive.
My email is not just about that project, it's more using that project as an example where even the engineer stated during one of those meetings that he was, his scope was only limited to that project. And the issue I'm trying to raise, and I've actually contacted the safety committee as well, is that we have a number of known projects that are in motion here, including the recently approved A and R for the Gilboa Properties breakup that are going to potentially bring a lot of traffic onto not only Gilboa but north and through east Douglas on 16. And I get the question to the board, because I'm not really that familiar with how things work with this type of stuff. So my question to the board, and the safety committee had directed me back here saying this is where I should address this, is that knowing that we have these, is there a facility or a methodology that this board can take that says, okay, we want to do a much more comprehensive view, not project by project, but what will be the impact with the known projects on the residential areas that exist along Gilboa North and through east Douglas? Because I know of five of them that have been in discussion so far, right? So that's really the purpose of my bringing this to the attention of the board, not just the single project.
We share your angst, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's statewide notifications, highways, roads, and we're, and also next week is traffic is being addressed for the Blackstone Logistics on next week's hearing, so you may want to listen in on that as well.
The last meeting, I don't think anybody showed up, so it really.
We were all there, just ran out of time for the traffic study.
They didn't do the traffic study.
Didn't do the traffic.
Yeah.
Because of other issues.
And we really can't talk about other projects that haven't come before us regarding their traffic situation or anything like that. I mean, at one point Douglas, you know, someone proposed a mall in Douglas. I mean, so a lot of it's just hearsay until it actually comes before this board. We can only look at it on a project-by-project basis, we can't do a build-out.
We've got that project and we've got the one that's going in on the others, on the south side of north of Gilboa Park.
Nothing has been presented to us yet about that project.
Correct.
There's nothing we can study till we know what's going there.
Okay, no, understood. I just want to say that, you know, I think we have to be diligent beyond a single project-by-project approach here. And I understand the constraints that you might have because no one's come to you yet. But, you know, I guess the question is, does this board consider itself responsible to take a comprehensive view if you did have three or four projects all at once that were coming through the pipeline?
Well, if they're all at once, but. What role does the state, if you know, knowing this project's coming on and we know we have an issue with the bridge coming in north, north half, coming into downtown and they may be using, where does the turns, the radiuses, the, we talked about this, how do we appeal to the, you know, there's things, bridges are gonna have to be built, you know, we have, things are gonna have to be done.
All right, well, last thing I want to do is appeal to the state and then stick a rotary in.
Well.
You know, like a milbury.
But I'm just saying, the horse out of the barn thing and what Mr. Simmons is saying is not wrong and we talked about it, that we feel we're gonna be assaulted soon. You know, this is gonna be a full-out, when all this happens, the downtown is gonna be crushed, so.
Life is gonna.
But is there a mechanism, Ian, is there something, I'm just asking, is there?
It's kind of the question, thank you.
Well, I mean, I don't think it makes sense to appeal to the state since none of this, none of these roads are state-owned roads, except, you know, with the exception of Route 16.
No.
No, that's.
The only thing would be Manchog.
It's only a little corner over here by Manchog, that's it.
Oh, okay.
16 is not state.
Then, yeah, I see no reason to really appeal to the state. It's more of just, you know, if you want to take a really comprehensive traffic study, that would require probably an engineer, an engineering firm to sort of do a comprehensive study.
We take our own?
You can't, you can't.
No, we take it case by case.
Case by case, by the project.
Then we do the traffic study and we determine.
When the next project comes in, we can say, hey, based upon the tri-town project, looking at their traffic, now you have to do your build-out on top of that, that's when you get stuck getting build-outs. Now everybody has to take a look at their traffic impacts.
And that's why in those meetings, those major questions have been brought up. And that's why it's taken them so long to respond back on other questions we concern. Because we got pretty in-depth and pretty adamant on certain things that they didn't even think about.
Correct.
And we laid out, so this next meeting on that tri-town, I think is gonna be massive.
Massive.
Well, because.
I mean, when you turn onto that bridge, when you turn, an tractor trailer is turning on the bridge, you cannot be in that other lane. You have to back up to let them come in or leave. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous.
But you ever can, I understand that, they gotta remember.
The bridge over the, huh?
The bridge over.
North Street.
North Bridge, North Street.
But you also have to always keep in mind, they're public roads.
Correct, yeah.
So anybody could drive on.
Okay, great, great.
I'm just saying, just remember, it's a public road.
You get it, and this is where I'm learning from you. So DOT, I mean, there's, you talk about radiuses and things like that, if there's gonna be accidents there all the time, how does that impact?
Thing is, that would come back to the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna be accidents all the time, but I think there's gonna have to be a little bit of give and take.
But when someone comes up to the front there, a car, an tractor trailer is making the turn towards town, downtown.
Yeah.
You have to back up, what is that on a road?
I've never seen anybody have to.
Oh, I see it.
Unless it's an oversized load, a normal tractor trailer.
Or if they're already committed and.
Yeah, or someone pulls up across the white line. But anyways, you stagger, you stagger your stop lines, that's the other thing, and I mean.
With projects, you have a way to address that.
Right, right.
There's existing roads that have been hit rough.
Yep.
So, I mean, it is what it is unless the town, highway department decides, hey, we're gonna make a change in the road. Otherwise, that's the end, that's a mute.
I mean.
It's not for us, we're drivers, it's for other people that are involved.
I mean, the safety committee can decide if they want to make a couple of streets, you know, no trucks, you know, I mean.
Might even take a little while to try to get.
Again, again, I mean, like Cook Street, Cook Street would probably be a no-truck street. You know what I mean?
But that might start for them to start looking into maybe a study on what improvements could be done for that area.
Right.
That's all.
Can I speak a little bit more? I did speak, I did connect with the safety committee and they advised me to work through this body.
Yep.
But one of the things that was mentioned in that conversation was that the safety committee by itself still cannot set speed limits. They have to work and get approval from the DOT is what I was.
They do, correct, they do.
Yep.
Yes, they do.
So it's not just them that would make the decision, there has to be a concerted effort that would kind of bring something forward to the DOT that would then make it something that would be considered and decided upon.
Yep, correct, correct.
So can I ask a question then? Even if it's a town road, not a state road, the DOT sets the speed limit on our roads?
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
In other words, I think.
We, they have to write, they have to approve the recommendations of the safety committee.
Oh, but we can make recommendations.
They have to say yes.
They don't have to say yes, but.
Based on the study too.
Can I just ask one question, sorry? Norman, have you reviewed the traffic study for Blackstone Logistics?
I did cursory look at it, I will go back and give it a very thorough review.
Okay.
But I did find, I did find the documentation that you're referring.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because it does have future projections, and during one of the first hearings, I did bring up the multiple projects that you're talking about. And also DOT planning and engineering staff at District 3 and in Boston have reviewed the traffic study and did not indicate the need for any mitigation measures at the intersection. So the location will be subject to Mass DOT's review for post-construction traffic monitoring. So I would read that and save the specific comments, there is, you know, projections into the future, but we don't know if they're actually going to happen anyway, so that, the board is very well aware of the traffic study and the future development of that roadway. So you're asking, you know, is the board aware or do you look at the sum of the new projects? Yes, we do, it has been looked at for sure. Yes, Ian?
If I can say one thing, if you go back and review some of the video and stuff of those meetings and listen to when they came to Douglas, to the comments that were raised, I think you'd be quite surprised at how much we are concerned about what's going on. Because we really nailed it pretty hard and they were quite surprised, even Sutton was, because some of it involves them also, coming down to Manchog, et cetera, that there was things mentioned that they didn't even think of. So on diligence of the town here on the planning board, I think we're trying to stay well above power on what's going on with this traffic stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying no, if this board wasn't, it was really trying to, you know, weave my way through the processes here and figure out, because of the nature of this being convergent to multiple projects, you know, how do we deal with that? How do we, how do we take a position that can be equitable to those projects as well as reflect the nature of the impact on the town and how we want to mitigate that impact on the town, basically.
Okay, and thank you for your time.
Yep, yep, we'll keep diligent on it if you have any more concerns.
Oh, Ian's got something.
Ian's got something to say, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to quickly, and I know it doesn't really, since we're talking about Gilboa Street, I just want to remind you that CMRC did receive funds to do a traffic, to do a warrant analysis to see if it would make sense to put in a traffic signal at the intersection of Gilboa and North.
Yep.
And if you are worried, and I know it's not Gilboa, but about the bridge on the top of the North Street Bridge, there are a small bridge grant program through the state that the town can apply for to, you know, to replace the bridge, that could also have some road improvements that might improve where cars have to stop at that, if there is an intersection, so that, you know, trucks turning, we don't have that issue. So there are.
I would like that, can we apply for that, please?
Yeah, can you send that to Matt?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's, when it's open for when.
Some metal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's there.
Yeah, we need that.
With this stuff going on and.
That bridge.
It's like we're unaware of this stuff.
On a slick, but I'm aware of it, I think, I think we're there meeting that this was discussed that, I believe.
I think that bridge needs a sidewalk at the end of the day and needs to be a little wider.
Widened.
Well, there's like logging trucks coming through there, you have to, you have to, you have to stop way far back to get the swing.
Yep, okay, cool.
Now, appreciate the concerns.
Yep, thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
All right, thanks guys, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Number seven, signed decision, Carol Gogolinski, William Cogley. All right, Ian has prepared a decision for us, we can sign it at the end of the night.
Yep.
Before we leave.
Yeah, I'm leaving very shortly.
Okay.
Number eight.
Are we gonna sign those tonight?
Yeah.
Or do you want to review them first? Did the applicant get a copy of those?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, we should wait for them to get a copy.
I thought that that was the big thing.
So we can review it tonight and then, and then when those changes, send it over to the applicant.
We only have the one copy, you don't have one.
We have.
We have.
Oh, you do have one, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have it in email.
I can only get one, okay.
You want a brief discussion on it?
You got a couple more?
This is the, this is the next one, Joe Constantine.
That one should be okay to sign, right?
So, well, is, does the applicant get an opportunity to review the decision or not?
On which one?
On everything, on every decision that we prepare.
Also.
Are you sure?
It's best practice for them.
I'm saying, I don't know if they did or not, I thought you.
No, no, I, I know they didn't.
Okay, we'll hold off on it.
Yeah.
And I've not seen that before in, for other towns, so that's, so I can definitely send it to them tonight for, just for review, and then, do you have to sign it at a public meeting? Or is this somewhere you just go into the office?
No.
We can have Ernie sign on our behalf.
Yeah. Yeah, we just don't like to sometimes, you know, if the applicant then says, hey, wait a second, this isn't the decision, I wasn't aware of it.
It's already signed.
And it's already signed, it's already logged.
Stamped in with the town clerk.
That's why, it's just a good, good practice.
If you could get us the answer, if the applicant is required or not required to review the decision before it's signed and stamped in with the town clerk. Because I think it was a little bit of a gray area.
And Florida, I thought we always have wanted.
We always wanted to share it.
So that we don't have issues like we got in the past.
Oh, yeah, I think it's just good practice.
Yeah.
It's just making sure everybody's on the same page.
Same page.
That's all, I don't think it's.
I mean, with the solar ones, I know we did send those over and they were questioning terms and we edited the conditions too.
Yeah.
Yep, nope, we'll hold off on both of them until they.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think two weeks or three weeks, okay.
All right.
There's no time restraint in any of that, right?
No, we have 90 days, I believe, for the close of the hearing.
Just making sure.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the file right now.
Okay, all right.
All right, sign approval of preliminary subdivision plan for McIntyre Lumen titled Peter Michael Business Park, Davis Street Possible Vote.
That I did not prepare because it was an informal approval.
Yeah.
So I didn't think that we needed to have an official decision.
Yeah, we usually don't.
We'll have it for the definitive.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Peter's online. Ernie?
Yeah, that's correct.
Ernie, Ernie.
We have three ZBA applications.
Ernie, Peter's online.
Oh, Peter?
Anything for me on that one?
Yeah, Peter, how are you?
Tom McIntyre just.
It's Tom.
I'm sorry.
I was just here on the preliminary subdivision.
It's a really good camera.
For me, so if not, that's fine, see you at the definitive.
Yeah.
Clarity, it looks like CNBC or something. Really, it's quite good.
And back to you.
I know.
Back in the studio.
Have a nice night, thank you.
Thank you.
Better shaved when you were on that.
Yeah.
Cool.
All right, CBA applications, we have one, two, three.
I'll take one.
I'll take one. All right, please keep them together after you take them apart.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna recuse myself from number 10.
Yeah.
See what you want that one, okay. Want that one? Who else wants one?
Yeah.
At a point. I'm gonna put these back in the folder for signing later after the applicant's been notified. We have nothing else to sign that I can see, no vouchers.
Okay.
It's appealing, the decision.
Uh, meeting minutes?
Yeah, while you guys are reviewing that, maybe we can do meeting.
And why is Bob here?
I was here for Tom McIntyre, I thought for the preliminary, you have to either approve, disapprove or approve the comments.
We, we voted.
We already.
We voted.
Yeah, we did.
They voted last week, they were in the last meeting.
Yeah.
He's all set.
Yeah.
They're all set.
They were good.
With some minor changes, like.
Yeah, with comments.
With comments.
Proved with comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, technically, just technical stuff, but nothing really.
It's appealing, a decision.
Yeah.
They should be all set to go, Bob, yep. They're good to go.
Do we have any minutes?
Do we have meeting minutes, Mike?
I don't think we do.
Sure, if you want.
Yeah, go.
All right.
There you go, so you got to poll it out.
Um, January 12th, 2021, I didn't see anything wrong with it. So does anybody else have a objection or a?
I've already reviewed them also, I sent my comments. I reviewed them before you guys got them.
Minutes.
So.
With my edits.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for January 12th, 2021.
Did you send edits?
Mm-hmm.
So you sent.
Second.
Hey, motion made by Mike, seconded by Tracy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
I CC'd you.
Yay.
You never did.
126.
Yep. Well, again, I don't know, anyone else has reviewed this, but I looked at.
Tracy has.
January 26th.
She put her notes in there.
I also did.
You did what?
I reviewed the minutes before they were printed.
Thank you, any corrections of it?
No, I sent my edits.
And they're already.
Yeah, they're already in there, yep.
Very good. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for January 26th.
Second.
2021.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Aaron.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries, 218.
All right. Um, one of the ZBA 83 Webster Street I'm looking at, doesn't seem to be a major concern for us. It's a side setback variance.
He didn't, we're, we're just doing one more.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I saw a quick break in the action.
Go ahead, Mike.
Meeting minutes for February 20, February 18th. Anybody have any additions or comments, or you're okay?
I did, I'm ready, yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written for February 18th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
All right.
Okay, Jake, go.
All right, 83 Webster Street, looking for a side setback variance. It's required 25 feet, it's like they're looking for 6.92 for a.
Where are they now than that? Where, where are they relative to that now? They're going to do a build out to it?
I think it's existing 51.74, and they're proposing 6.9.
How big's the garage?
45 foot addition.
Uh, 34 by 30, two-car garage with storage space on the side with an 8-foot breezeway to the main house.
Oh.
So, they're saying due to the shape of the lot and the existing house location.
Three-car garage.
Yeah, if I can.
But they're only getting 6 feet.
The desired garage cannot be built without a sideline variance. Um, and they have a neighbor who butts them on that side, that, saying that they don't have an issue with it. Um, then it's actually, where they're going to be putting it's already a pre-existing driveway, and they don't plan to cut trees or, uh, due to the distance, there's ample natural ground cover, will occupy most of the existing driveway surface, um, no tree clearing, a major reworking of the natural lot line.
What's the required?
25.
25, and what, what are they?
Six.
They're going to have six feet left?
Six point.
The ZBA is on it.
So they have 50.
I don't think the ZBA is going to approve that because they never allowed 10.
Six feet.
They don't want, they don't want to.
It's really, it's 6.92, that's.
Yeah, but.
That's where the same.
The third garage bay is just excessive. I mean, the third garage bay.
Well, there's a breezeway also.
For various.
And a breezeway.
So you could still build it, it would just be smaller.
You gotta just change it.
But you could hold 25, they, they have 25, 26 feet. So what's the shape of the lot that's peculiar about it? The uniqueness of the lot? Is it shaped like a?
A, a lot of those, a lot of those parcels, a lot of those parcels used to be an acre and a half.
RC1?
I'm looking through.
RC2s, RC2s, but then they.
It starts wide at the road and it, it gets narrow in.
A pie shape.
Narrowness is not, uh.
Like a pie shape?
Narrowness is not a hard shape.
Yeah, here in the frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Soil conditions, topography.
You might be 20 feet here, but by the time you get back there, you're only 6.
Yeah, but you're building a big building too, right?
Yeah, it's not just a 24 by 24 garage for two cars.
24 is a shed, that'd be a garage.
I got that shed. I got that shed.
Actually, 24 by 22 is a fair garage too, and the depth, 22, but not the, you need the.
Yeah, I mean, it's not one car. It's a commercial, it's, they want it for a.
I would say, yeah.
Household, you know, not, not a commercial.
That's a big size.
Yeah, I would say.
Modify the size of the building.
Add on to it.
Let's see if something.
Reduce the.
The problem is, the problem is, you don't, I mean, you don't have like a 10-foot or 15, you know, 15-foot, right, sides, side yard to be able to maintain your building.
Right, true, you can't, you can't get a machine in the backyard around that side.
Get to redo the setback.
Okay, so we have an opinion, so, I think generally we're thinking it's excessive.
Revise the.
Yeah.
Yeah, go smaller.
Go smaller.
Go what your lot, what your lot is allowed.
Because that's a big.
The same size as the house.
30 by 30 is big.
34.
34 by 30, yeah.
Oh.
That's another, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
You want to put a two-car garage in, that's fine, but you're putting a 30 by 30 with that addition on it?
Exactly.
You're asking too much.
Well, you only got so much land, so I guess, I guess, I guess we.